Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is 6:06 on Thursday, July 13, 2017. As accustomed to all of our regular meetings, we start it by doing a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Tonight it will be led by Councilman Azar.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call himself, please.
President.
Here.
President. Councilman Vaughn.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Councilman Nasr.
Present.
Councilman Nation.
Here.
Later present, one is absent.
Okay, before all of our regular meetings, we start off by having a 30-minute time for comments on non-agenda items. If you've never been here before, we set our agendas up with the first few up here. You can grab one to see what's on our agenda for tonight. So if there's anything that anybody would like to speak on regarding non-agenda items, please come to the podium and state your name and address and try and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Vicki Payne, 713 North 10th Street. And I want to know when the city's going to start maintaining our sewer lines. We're paying all this exorbitant amount of sewer bill now, and our lines are, the line across from our house is about 10 to 12 feet in diameter. We started having problems four or five years ago, and the, when we get storms like we did last night, it turns my toilets, shower, everything into geysers in our bathrooms. They flood out. This has happened several times in the last three or four years. The city sent, the engineer's office sent someone out about four years ago. They put a manhole in across the street thinking venting would help it. That didn't do nothing. They sent McAllisters out. They put a vent in our yard, which did nothing. And now they're telling me, the city sewer people come out today and inform me that it's not their problem. I need to quit calling them, and I need to hire a contractor to come out $600, $800 later to put a one-way valve on my house because the sewer line has eight to 10 feet of mud all through that sewer line. And I guess it's cheaper for them, for me, to put out the $600, $800 for a one-way valve than then to clean the sewer lines out. There are the old ceramic sewer lines, and it's, I know that this problem is in other areas of the city, and as these sewer lines crack, then it lets the dirt and earth in that goes through the lines, that settles and builds up, and, and our house was built in 1880. The sewer line is on the other side of the railroad track because railroad track came in after the house was built. So there's nothing we can do because CSX owns all that property. They own to the backside of our sidewalk in front of our house. So I don't know what to do, other than I feel like with the amount of sewer we're paying, the least they can do is clean out them sewer lines so we don't have these problems.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
What was your address again?
713 North 10th. We're the only house on 10th Street, and we have such a water problem there anyway because the tracks goes, each end of the road, the road goes way up to go over the railroad tracks than what the level of the street is. So the water, when it rains like that, the water overshoots the, the storm drains at the ends of the block. It comes down, down those ramps and settles right in front of our house. We've always got a big flood in front of the house because of this. We go out and we keep it, both drains, we rake them out, be sure they're all cleaned out and stuff to keep the flooding down. Otherwise, it'll flood clean over into Dada label parking lot if we don't keep our drain cleaned out. So we do what we can, but it's like, you know, it's not our job to keep these sewer lines cleaned out. And when there's eight, 10 feet of mud build up in our sewer lines in this city, it's, it's creating a problem for everybody, not just us, everybody. And it seems to me like they should be able to start somewhere and start vacuuming those, the, the mud stuff up out of, out of these lines and maintaining the sewer lines that we're paying to be maintained.
Councilman Garrison.
Vicki, can you tell us who you've worked with before in the city?
Um, three or four years ago, I believe the guy's name was Scott. I can't remember his last name.
Barbour.
Yes. I called and left him a message early today, and he has not called me back yet. And he's the one that sent McAllisters out, and it was my understanding when McAllisters come out, we didn't even know they were coming out. They just showed up and started digging this hole in my yard, and I'm like, you know, I'm out there, I go, "What are you guys doing?" And he goes, "Well, the city engineer's office sent us out here to put a valve in." Well, they didn't put a valve in, all they did was put a vent in. So to me, it was a waste of city's money for them to come out and put a vent in my yard that didn't, that didn't solve a problem at all. It did nothing. And the city put a va, put that big, I couldn't even imagine how much that cost to put that big manhole in across the, on the other side of the railroad tracks from us with a manhole cover on it and everything that did absolutely nothing. And here's another thing. The city does not have any vented manhole covers. They're all solid. Now, y'all got to realize that if you ain't got a vent to, for this stuff to go out somewhere, it's going to start backing up someplace else. If they would go through and put these vent, vented manhole covers in areas of the city where it's not going to bother people for the smell that might come out of them, it's going to release a lot of this problem that the city people are having with this water backing up because it's got someplace to vent out.
Well, you said you left me a message today at my house.
Yes.
Did you leave a phone number where I can get in touch with you?
Yes.
All right. I'll reach out to Scott Barber and see what the next step would be and track you down if that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, we're the only house on that block, and it's, it's like, you know, so our house is the only one it's got to go to.
Sure. Um, there's no, is there anyone here from engineering or wastewater that might?
Chuck's in the back. You want to come and speak on this, Chuck?
Chuck, maybe you'll save me a phone call.
No, I'm afraid I won't be able to. Um, there's a lot, we've done a lot of work out there over the years. I really have to go back and look and see what's been done before I can speak intelligently on, on that situation. Sorry.
I appreciate that. Could, could you do that and then follow up with me and then?
Be happy to.
I can get with Vicki and see, you know, what we can do if anything.
Okay. Will do.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Vicki.
Hello?
Hi, how are you? I must compliment Mrs. Crossen on her choice of tops. It was a plan, it just happened. My name is Kelly Dumas, and I live at 2609 Wilson Street. Uh, my husband and I have lived that, that address for 36 years. We raised a son and a daughter in the neighborhood and sent them off to college, and they returned to Terre Haute where they remain. Uh, they're successful teachers in our school corporation, and each one of them married a teacher. So we pay our taxes, they pay their taxes, we pay ours on time, and we take pride in our home and our neighborhood. We've been on a four, four-year saga, trying at first to help Bob Clary at 2607 Wilson Street, to get, uh, help for him by mowing his grass and trying to encourage him to get medical and dental care at St. Anne's. And now we're here to try to get his property cleaned up and meeting the code standards of the city. We live in a lovely east-side neighborhood. It's a three-block street with a cul-de-sac at the end. Wilson Street is located east off 25th between Oak and Crawford. Everyone maintains their homes and yards. Only one person does not, and he lives in squalor next door to us. He has physical, financial, and mental challenges which appear to interfere with his ability to maintain a home. We have contacted many agencies for help during our four-year saga. Code enforcement, city engineers, the mayor's office, the health department, adult protective services, the police, the prosecutor's office, and the last time we contacted code enforcement, they contacted adult protective services in our presence. I believe that was on June 12th, and, uh, she requested that he be put on a 72-hour hold. Uh, adult protective services refused to become involved. Uh, this was a visit to Mr. Clary's house initiated by us, and we certainly are not indifferent to his plight. We know that he does not have money. We know that he has physical and mental issues. But how can an employee of the city or the county, I don't know what she is, essentially refuse to become involved and not do her job? And at some point, I would like to know what the criteria is to determine the need for adult protective services. Because if there's anyone alive in this city who needs adult protective, protective services, it is this gentleman. Uh, I have photos and just some communication to share, and I pass those around. I hope you have a chance to take a look at those. There is no gas service. There has been no electrical service, however. It was turned back on last Friday. So in the winter, there is no heat. He heats with an electric heater in one space, uh, in one space at a time. Um, we were told that it's city code. A home must make, must maintain a 60-degree temperature in the winter. His home does not. He had no lights, no way to refrigerate food, and he has water, but he has water in sewage in another person's name, and that person is Albert Clark of Cayuga, Indiana. We were able to get some help from Brian McElhaney. I can't give him enough praise because he really has helped us, and Chief, Chief Classy, and we're grateful for that. All others have referred us to code enforcement, which appears to us to be overwhelmed and woefully understaffed. Mr. Clary has been to city court many, many times for nuisance violations, and he has a 40-page document outlining his citations according to the mayor, whom I talked to on Friday. When he is cited, no one follows up to see if he obeys the judge's orders. He has no consequence, consequences, except liens placed against his dilapidated property. Due to his financial situation, this is not an effective deterrent. We have endured his loud foul mouth laced with F-bombs for several years. Our goodwill for the neighbor has expired. He has alienated most of the neighbors, and we have quite a representation here of the neighbors, by his, um, behavior and his lack of civic pride. And in our neighborhood, we try to help each other. He chooses to be obnoxious, volatile, oppositional, and defiant. Please review the pictures at your leisure and help us, uh, maintain our lovely neighborhood. It's not, we don't think it's fair that, that just one house is able to take the value down of the rest of the neighborhood. Just one person, uh, is putting our neighborhood at a risk, and this is not right, and it certainly isn't a level above. We have been told if Mr. Clary is involuntarily removed from the squalor he lives in, the agency removing him would be responsible for, for providing shelter for him until the house is condemned or brought up to code. It comes down to a case of dollars and cents that no agency seems prepared to pay. If you look at the pictures, would any of you want that next door to you? I don't think there's any single person in here would, who would want to live next door to that. We've been informed that there are over 300 properties in town that are as bad as 2607 Wilson. That tells us that the city needs to upgrade its housing code rules when 300-plus properties, that certainly is not a level above. Thank you. Mr. Dumas.
I'm, uh, Bob Dumas, Kelly's lesser half. Well, I'm here to inform the mayor and the city council of a few recent events that, uh, that also involve Mr. Clary, having caused the neighbors some concerns about their health and safety. Recently, Bob was talking to a neighbor and defecated in his pants. He went to his home and changed his clothes, took the soiled pants outside onto his driveway, flushed them out with a garden hose, washed that feces down the driveway, took those dirty pants and put them in a five-gallon plastic bucket, sat there for multiple weeks. I lost track of it. I don't know if it's still there or not. Uh, Mr. Clary also, one evening, parked his vehicle in the drive, turned the volume up on his radio, full blast, and one of his neighbor, or his neighbor on the other side came to ask him if he would turn the volume down because his, uh, neighbor's wife was taking a nap before going to work. Bob said the noise didn't bother him, and he refused to do it. Certainly got into an argument, uh, ask you this and ask you that, and a few of the neighbors finally came out and, and called the police. Bob got into his vehicle and took off before the police arrived, so he avoided that problem. Next day, uh, my wife was out working in the garden, and I went on the Bob's porch. I'd say we go up there occasionally, we're not supposed to, and we move trash, and sometimes a dog gets over there because he throws food waste out, and the dogs just think it's a picnic ground. And, uh, found a, two packages that had mailed, had mailed to us. The packages were open and the contents were gone. So we called the police, and, uh, the police, uh, well, said, "But please get there, Bob wasn't home." So the next day, when Mr. Clary arrived, Kelly called the police and the, and two detectives were, uh, came in and talked to Bob, and, uh, said there was nothing they could do because no one saw him take the packages, and he denied knowledge of them. But the police officers did say they recommend him, he clean up his property because it's a health risk. 2:00 AM the following morning, uh, the neighbor who got into verbal, uh, confrontation with Mr. Clary, were watching a movie about 2:00 AM, and the neighbor's wife noticed a bright light outside of, of her window. Uh, she opened up and saw flames. So, uh, the neighbor's husband, you know, recommended, told her to call 911. He went outside to see what was going on, and he had some yard, some old plastic lawn furniture that had been ignited. So, uh, he told his wife he was going to put the fire out, but his wife told him that the firemen, uh, the fire department recommended that he doesn't do that, but he did anyway because it was getting too close to his house, so he put the fire out. Police came and talked to Mr. Clary, but he denied any knowledge of the fire taking place or being involved in it. Like my wife said, Clary, Mr. Clary has 40 pages of 311 complaints on properties he has and has had. With this mess, it's difficult to say Terre Haute is a level above. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Prud. I'm at 8:30 Collette, and I'm going to pile on with these two people that talk. Uh, we had a broken water main on Collette, uh, day before yesterday, and we couldn't use our water. And my understanding from what I've read and heard in the past is it's because the streets aren't swept like they're supposed to be, or like they used to be. All that silt and junk they're talking about gets underneath there, and I don't know if that's what may have break or not, but we couldn't use our water. And they said they'd notify us when we could, but they haven't, so, you know, if it kills me, it kills me. The other thing I want to bring up is Neil knows about this. Next door to me, there's a dead tree. We called 311, and they said they can't do anything about a dead tree on somebody's property. It's been over a year. Tanya lives up the street. She walked past there the other night. She said, "That's dangerous." I said, "Yeah, a big limb fell." And I heard it cracking, and I got out from under it. I said, "I don't understand why they didn't take the people for high grass, but they can't do nothing about a dead tree that's in danger and everybody all around it." He's got pictures of it, is what I was told. Forester came and said to take one of them out that's, uh, in the alley, but the next-door neighbor, he's messing around trying to get, uh, insurance, uh, Duke Energy, anybody but him have to pay for.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, did you want to speak on the Wilson neighborhood? Because it seems like we're having more and more people that are calling regarding bad apples in the neighborhood. I mean, could you give any more insight on the fact that it's, you know, 40 citations and where we're at on that, if that number is accurate?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor, do you have any?
Kind of acting up here a little bit. You know, I don't know, the numbers that I, when I had a conversation with Ms. Dumas was the 300 was regarding how many condemnments we have in the city. We were talking about the condemnation process. Um, you know, I didn't look up to see how many tickets. I mean, that's something that Michelle could probably help us with to see how many tickets an individual has. I just know there's multiple tickets. I can't quote a number. Um, we've got a lot of people in our community that get a variety of tickets. We've got, there's probably four or five that are similar to this one, where the neighbors are upset about a particular individual, and code enforcement or building inspector are two typical people who we would send out for an issue like that. They cite for what they can. We always try to work with people first. You know, we just don't write them a ticket and then expect them to show up in court because usually they won't do that. Uh, we try to get them to fix it. So we give them a little bit of time, and if they don't, then of course they got a court appearance. And then it's up to the judge. It's totally out of our hands once that happens. Once we write the ticket, we have nothing to do with it. It moves from the executive branch to the judicial branch, and it's up to the judge then to, you know, do something to that. We can't force that to happen. I mean, that's just the way the system works. So what we'll continue to do is write more tickets, and sometimes there'll be a default judgment on a lot of these people because they usually don't have the money to pay the ticket, and so the problem doesn't get resolved. So after that happens, we go back out and start the process all over again. This isn't unique to Terre Haute. Happens everywhere. That's the way the law works. And so all we can do is hopefully get people to be in compliance. Most people do, but there's a people out there, out of the 61,000 people living Terre Haute, there are people that just totally refuse to do it, and the more you write, more tickets you write, the more times you go out and deal with them, then they become to accuse us of harassing them. This gentleman does, but doesn't faze us. I had code enforcement go out again today, and we do everything that we can to get people into compliance, but it's up to them to pay the ticket or clean it up, and we can't force anything besides that. As a reminder, uh, we, we can go on property and inspect to determine whether something should be condemned or not. We can look at high grass, and we can look at trash, those kinds of things in the yard, but that's extensible. We can't make them clean it up. We can cut the grass by state statute. We're allowed to go and cut the grass and put a lien on their property, but we're not, we're not by state statute allowed to clean up their property and put a lien on it. That would be a great addition, but until the state legislature decides to do that, that won't happen. That's probably our second biggest problem besides high grass. It's just people having junk in their yards. I know we've, uh, I won't mention the specific addresses or names, but I know we have one way up on the far north side, uh, that has, you know, four or five hot tubs in the yard, a variety of other things. Big eyesore, been that way for a couple of years. We continue to cite them. The judge does whatever the judge does, and then we go back out and start the process all over again. That is the limitation of what we're allowed to do by law. We'll continue to do that. Um, you know, we have just enough resources to kind of cover the bases. We, we could use more code enforcement officers. Every community could, uh, but, you know, we do the best we can. And in this particular case on Wilson, we've been very responsive, and, uh, you know, I, it's just a problem where you have an individual that the more we go out there, the more visible we are, the more defiant he becomes about the system and how we're, um, coming after him. And so there's kind of a balance there between what we can do and what we would love to do, I guess.
And do we have any, you know, I know there's always a problem child in every neighborhood. Do we have, like, when we're getting repeated calls to a neighborhood, do we put them on a, kind of a watch list so the cycle isn't as long to get back to if, if we're repeatedly going to the same house? Are we?
Yeah, I mean, we track it through 311, so we'll have every record of every call for a particular address. We make notes in there about things. If, you know, if we tell them, "This is the last time we're going to deal with this," all those things are documented in there. But the ticket side of it, all we then would put in the, in the ticket would be that we wrote a citation, and then it goes over to the court. Then all we can do is wait to see what happens from the court, and except, most of the time, these people don't even show up. So they'll get a default judgment put against them for maybe, you know, $700, let's say, and they never pay it. And so the problem's still there, and they have a default judgment against them.
Okay. I appreciate you explaining that. Councilman Nation?
I appreciate these explanations, too. I deal with a lot of issues in my district that are, are part of this problem. Mayor, you talked about how the city is empowered to go and actually cut grass, uh, but what about the tree situation on the private property? Is that something that we're able to do?
Nope. It's not allowed by state statute. And you couldn't, and you couldn't make a local ordinance to do that either.
Right. It would have to be, uh, something that the state empowered local governments to do, and then we would have to actually.
And we do get that one quite often because people's trees are right next to somebody else's house, and they are, but it'd be, it's a civil matter between those two, and insurance companies, if it does fall, and create damage. Unfortunately, that's just the way state statutes are written.
Okay, thanks, Neil.
Councilman Crossan?
I believe I'm correct, Mayor, that the adult protective services are, is through the prosecutor's office?
Yes, it's a county function.
And that's, that's county, through the prosecutor's office. And is there any additional, um, citation or power when the, when the violation involves a public health risk, like some of the things that were described by the people here today?
You know, um, it all depends how bad that it gets. And so there's some things we can do to condemn a house because of a health issue. There's other things that it just doesn't meet the criteria of the state building code to condemn it. Um, you know, this house that you probably heard about with all the rats on 17th Street is an example. You know, if you don't kill rats, that's not something the city does, but the department does, so they come in and deal with that. In our case, and this gentleman's case at one point, his sewer line was not working properly, and it was coming out in the yard, and so we can condemn a house for that kind of a thing, but how clean it is on the inside or things like that are not under our jurisdiction.
Thank you. There you go.
Oh, Councilman, Councilman Vaughn?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, when it comes to the absence of certain utilities within our house?
Mm-hmm.
When would it be appropriate for the city to condemn that house?
Well, if we were notified in the winter, and I know we had one, I know at least one last winter that, and Chuck may remember, I don't know. I know it was on the north side where somebody didn't have any heat, and so you have to maintain, and that's, that's state law, so that's based on state building code, I should say. Um, and you have to maintain the temperature. So we can go in, and sometimes they won't let us in. I know we had one in Serington Grove area that fought us for years about going in their house. They wouldn't allow us into the house. And finally, we got a court order from, you know, county court to, um, to go into this individual's home, and we dealt with that situation. But we just, we don't have the authority just to bust in, kind of a thing. And so if we know they don't have any, you know, heat source in the winter, then the house can be condemned, and I know we have done that in the past. Not in this particular case, but we have done it with other homes. But it's a process. You don't just go out there and do that, especially if they won't let you in.
Thank you, Neil.
One more question. Councilman Nation?
I had the opportunity recently to sit in on city court for about a half an hour, and I watched our new city judge dispense justice from the bench here. And I was impressed, and I, I, I wonder, have you had any conversations with our new city ju, I mean, he's not that new anymore, but with our new city judge about his approach to these kinds of things?
Yes, and before we even had his first case, we had that conversation. And so, you know, you, you're hopeful that, you know, our last judge and judges before that all do a good job. They go in and do the best to their ability, but some of these folks are just habitual offenders, and if you don't do something a little bit more, there has to be a punitive punishment system here. And so far, um, our new judge is showing some signs of doing some things and dealing with some situations that I would hope over the next coming months, we'll get a better feel for that, but so far, so good, and I like that approach. Um, it's, you know, there's a lot of cases that come through city court, and so you, we don't hear about most of these things. You know, I understand the, these folks' situation completely, but when you look at, we've got 23,000 houses and households in the city of Terre Haute, and when you look at the total number of habitual offenders, it's really a small list, but if you live next to them, it's a big deal, and it's a serious problem. And so it kind of takes the combination of, of both branches, you know, to, to handle that, of government, and I wish we had more power sometimes. I mean, it would be awesome. And every other mayor will tell you the same thing. I wish the state would give us more power, give us home rule, so we could do some tougher things. But, uh, so far, so good with the new judge.
Thanks, Neil.
Councilman Garrison?
Uh, just quickly to follow up on the tree issue on the alley, we can't remove trees on private property unless it's in the tree row. Is that, is that?
Right. There's a few alleys where we actually own the alley, but in most cases, it's just in the right of way of an easement, and so we don't go on private property and remove trees. The trees that are in the tree row, we, that's just my, and that's, you know, based on state ordinance also, or local ordinance is.
Okay. And then to this group of folks here on the Wilson, um, issue, knowing what you know on your side of the city government, is there any next steps or best recommendations from your end to advise them on what they can?
There's a few alleys where we actually own the alley, but in most cases, it's just in the right of way of an easement. And so we don't go on private property and remove trees. The trees that are in the tree row, that's just my, and that's, you know, based on state ordinance also, our local ordinance is.
Okay. And then to this group of folks here on the Wilson issue, knowing what you know on your side of the city government, is there any next steps or best recommendations from your end to advise them on what they can do?
Well, yeah. I hear you. I mean, that's a tough one to answer because we're doing everything we can from the legal perspective. You know, I've had some conversations with him and I've been trying to catch up with him here recently to get a more recent conversation. We dealt with him when he lived on South Brown Street. And then he moved into this neighborhood a few years ago. So I've been aware of him for some time and we had issues over there also. And at some point, he will move and then all of a sudden, things will get better in this neighborhood. But that's, you know, you can't make him move. All we can do is, if his house becomes condemnable, we'll do that and then that'll accelerate the process. So what we'll do is continue to stay on top of it and go out and we'll write tickets whether we get accused of harassment or not. And we'll try to help him. We try to get him to work with us, you know, and I think he's, I can't, I'm not a psychologist, so I won't go into some of why people resist sometimes, but he isn't the only one that does that. I had a lady last night that did that to me who's, we were dealing with flooding issue and, you know, I mean, you could tell that she wasn't quite right frame of mind and we had quite a conversation. And so there's, there's folks that sometimes just don't understand and they don't want to understand.
Right. Yeah, I know it's difficult. After doing it a little bit, it's great if you can come at it as a, as a friend, as a neighbor and how can I help? And I know they, it sounds like you've all done that. And then it starts to take a turn and go bad and then you just can't seem to get it.
It's hard to turn it back the other way. Right. Well, we'll continue to do our part. I mean, I, we hear these folks clearly and I sent code enforcement out again today. I've got new fresh pictures and we're, we're doing our thing.
Okay. That's all.
Councilman Elliott?
Mayor, have you had a conversation with anyone at the state about the additional powers you'd like the city to have?
Yeah, I've, you know, I've been doing this nine and a half years now and I got really involved with I Act in my second year in office. And we lobby and try to do that as a group of mayors, all 121 mayors, pretty much every year. But once again, it's tough to get our legislators to listen to things like that to make those kind of changes. They, they would rather keep the power at the state level and not give home rule and give us authority, local authority. That's a common theme. I've been dealing with it for eight plus years now.
Well, I mean, they're not going to come over here and pick up somebody's trash and stuff, the state's not.
No, but what I'm saying is for us to be, like as an example, for some reason, at one time, the legislature decided it's okay to go cut grass and put a lien on it. Well, we've asked them to just let us go put a lien, go clean up the property, take the trash away and put a lien on it, but that's not allowed.
Okay. Well, I'd be willing to talk to the state legislatures that I know and you can get me some information as to what those additional rights or powers, you know, you think the cities should have.
Be happy to do that. They're familiar with it. We just need to keep, I need more help and that would be great.
Like it's a, that almost seems like a no brainer to me, why they won't do that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a delightful street.
Absolutely.
With one exception.
One exception.
They are not sugarcoating that.
No question about that, no doubt.
Wonderful, wonderful area over in there. So.
That goes to condemnation of homes too, because we've been trying to do more to speed the process up. You know, it takes us about two years before we can tear a house down.
So if we can't do what we need to be able to do, then we need to try to get those rules and laws.
Yep. And I'll continue to go to bat every legislative session. You know, I serve on the legislative committee for AIM and we bring those up every year and they never even get a hearing. So we'll just continue to fight that battle.
Okay. Well, I'm willing to join the fight.
Okay, good.
Are you?
Councilman Garrison?
Along those lines, I think that's a good idea. Maybe we could band together with other council members across the state and join the mayors.
It would be helpful.
Uh huh. Maybe we can work on that. It's a long process, but start today and get it started.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to open it for one more public comment, if anybody else has anything to add in our public comment section. You just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sarah Smith and I live at 2530 Wilson Street. I wasn't planning on commenting today and you all seem to have your hands tied and our hands seem to be tied, but what can we do to help out, to make it a, you know, our property values are going down. All this stuff was looked at. So what can we do as a group, as a community, to help him without stepping on any walls or any toes to make it where we are helping? I don't want my house to go down in value because of this house. So what can I do to help?
Sounds like you just need to contact your legislature.
That's it? That's it?
That's a, that's a start. Mayor, do you have any other suggestions?
I don't know if it'd be helpful to try to have a conversation with, directly with this city judges that deal with these issues and just learn from them what, what they think or what they think they might be able to do with, about these situations. They're ones apparently that have a, it's an opinion we don't have or don't know.
I meant as a community, as ourself, without reaching out to you guys, because you guys are doing what you need to be doing. What can we do in our community to assist? Is there anything at all that we can do to assist?
Councilman Garrison?
I think if it's a, if it's a problem that is a new problem that you've identified and probably much like what they've done, if you can meet with the owner of the property or whoever's residing in that property and just maybe have a one-on-one or two-on-one and at least have a conversation, not in a group, not in an embarrassing way, because a lot of times they don't have funds to do the things we all want them to do. Well, I did that recently and it didn't really work out all that great, but it was a good conversation. And we, the neighborhood had backed me and said, look, this item that we needed, we could all chip in and help fund that. And so we made that offer and, you know, like, thanks. We haven't used that, but that's a good way to at least have a conversation. Because if you go at them as an attack rather than that, it's just, it's to go back the other way. I definitely appreciate that. I mean, that's, that's only we wrote, tried to have some, some help.
Yeah. Is it against the law for us to go and clean up his house? So we all just go sit and watch and no one can do anything?
Pretty risky. I worked, well, the graffiti things that I've worked on in the past, I was just going to do that, try and get permission. And then when I got to this spot, you know, I was told, you really have to be careful because they can bring legal action against you. So it's best to do it legally and ask, ask what's the best way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Corrections to the journal, please.
There are none.
Communications?
They're in your packets.
Reports from governmental agencies?
President Asser.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah. I distributed a package for the meeting of some financial schedules I'd like to take a few minutes and go over, kind of consider this a budget background primer as we, budget time is around the, around the corner. I'll go through this page by page as quickly as I can. I try to use yellow highlights to focus on the things that I think are most important. The first page, A1, is just a summary of the general fund cash receipts and cash disbursements activity and resulting monthly and year-to-date surpluses and deficiency for calendar year 2016. And I prepared this data month by month last year, finished it when tax season ended back in May or June and just now getting around to presenting it. But what I want to illustrate to you, when we get through the month of April, you know, we're 33% through the year, but the general fund's only received 8.8% of its revenue. And that results in a, in a surplus year-to-date of, or a debt deficiency of 8.2 million. Then in May, we got a property tax advance of over $4 million and that made that month have a surplus. And then in June, a lot of revenue comes in. Then the six-month cycle kind of repeats itself. When we get to the end of October, our year-to-date general fund disbursements exceeded the receipts by over $10 million. And I did not use any loan activity in this, in the receipts number. So this reinforces the need for a positive general fund cash balance when you start a year so that you got the money to deal with the fact that your expenses come very irregularly and the revenue is irregular. Page A2, not going to spend much time on that, but that's where those numbers come from. So month by month, this is the detail of the general fund revenue. I stuck in a year-to-date column at the end of June, a July through December column, and then you've got a total year-to-date. Last year was a little bit different from the standpoint that the pilot from the wastewater treatment plant, it didn't come in till December. And this year, we've been told it was going to come June and December, like $2 million each of those, those two times. So that's just a, that spreadsheet just kind of supports the numbers on the front page. There was a lot of pages, B1 and B2, that's our cash balance schedules for the month of May. Had an article of paper earlier this week. I just wanted to just kind of summarize the observations on two pages for you that people normally make. The numbers are in red, that's just my count of the number of funds that have deficits. I came to 14 deficit balances totaling $19.7 million if you look at page two, Roman numeral three. I also highlighted in yellow funds that I kind of didn't think would be in the cash pool based upon what I've seen, heard and read over the years. That adding machine tape of those items on the bottom of page B2 comes to that, to that total. And I have trouble with a positive pool cash balance. The main account that goes one way or the other is Fund 620, the wastewater treatment plant. I thought I recall spring of 2016 or resolution of that situation with the SRF was that fund couldn't be in the, in the cash balance pool. I hadn't gone back to those files yet to see if I can find anywhere I have anything in writing. But you'll notice on page two, those funds 612 through 620, those wastewater utility debt funds and their operating fund, I mean, those totaled $27 million, over $27 million. And the grand total was $25 million. So that does tell you where a lot of the money is as it was reported in the, in the article. We also have and don't talk about very much, $6 million that was borrowed from the county in early 2016. We don't discuss it or talk about it or know when or how we're going to ever pay that back. It was, it was my thinking at the time, it was going to be part of the repaid from the bond issued proceeds from long-term control plan phase two, which is supposed to happen this year. That's what we passed the sewer rate increase for to start funding the money for that. And sooner or later, we need to get a, get an update on what's happening with page two. Page C1, property tax revenue is pretty significant to the general funds and some of our other funds. So I just kind of went back and recapped by six-month periods for 2015, 16, and what we received last month in June of 2017, the property tax money that has, has come in. The good news is that the general fund received $9,658,000 in June compared to $8,887,000 a year ago. So that's a, you know, $700 some thousand dollar increase. I got that number by getting the data, the detail on the next page, Form 22, from the, from the council. That's the form that accompanies the payment. The left-hand column there summarizes those, those numbers. And then the last page that you have, I'm just going to kind of zoom in when the June 30 numbers come out for the general fund. The general fund will look to be in a lot better cash position compared to June 30, 16. Well, here's $8,170,565 reasons for that. We received a pilot in, $2 million a pilot in June, which we didn't receive till December a year ago, we're $2 million better off. The loan from the Department of Redevelopment, this year that's formally moved on our cash balance statement. In the past, their accounts have just been part of the cash pool when those dollars weren't moved between the details of our cash balance statement. Our TAW loan is $4 million this year. Last year it was $1.6 million from the bank and $2 million from the CCI capital improvement, came with capital improvement fund. So that's a $400,000 increase. And then our June property tax receipts were $770,000 more this year than last year. So, so expect that, you know, expect to see a substantially reduced or substantially improved general fund cash balance for, for these reasons, with timing being the reason for part of it and the inclusion of property taxes being part of it and just the way the accounting records are now regarding the loan from the Department of Redevelopment. So just kind of some cash balance data and some general fund revenue and expense history that, you know, you might like. We basically have about six sources of revenue in the general fund that are $1 million or more a year and the rest of it is relatively small. That's it. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to respond or ask questions?
President, members of the council, Mayor Dubinett. Well, just a couple of things. I think that, well, one of the most important things we need to clarify here is those highlighted in yellow are not part of the cash pool. All the redevelopment funds, the majority of the wastewater funds are not part of the pool. I don't know where the confusion lies because they're not. As an example, in the story that was in the newspaper here this week, we're talked about if wastewater hadn't funded the budget, we wouldn't have been able to pay our bills in May. That's simply not true. Those funds are in a separate bank account and we can't touch those funds except for expenses for the sanitary district and wastewater and then our administrative fee and our pilot. That's all we take out of there. Setting it a separate bank, separate bank account, it's not in the cash pool. It is not. None of the redevelopment funds, all the redevelopment monies are in their individual bank accounts, all 20 bank accounts. The only thing that goes to the pool is when we pay the bills. When it's time for them, when they process their claims, through redevelopment as an example, they write us a check that is deposited into our cash pool fund, if you will, to cover the checks that we print out for them. That's the only time it moves through there. So it's never part of the pool since we've made the change. So kind of what you said, Earl, back to that letter for the SRF thing related to wastewater, they're not part of it. You know, there are some funds here that are, well, none of the bond funds are, we don't hold any of those funds. Those are not even in Terre Haute. Those are Bank of New York. But there are some funds that we put money in that are part of the pool to fund the next bond payment. It might be outside of that. But I'm going to go through, because I had a conversation with Dave about this yesterday, that we've got to clarify that because that's just, that's not correct information. And we're going to do that. He promised to come in and meet with me and we'll walk through that.
Okay. And then before long, you'll get a request for me to go through the details of the May 31 bank reconciliations and so I know exactly what's in the general fund or the disbursements, the general disbursements cash pool and then the payroll cash pool, you know, what those balances are. And to try to do the same thing, you just kind of pin that down exactly where it is and what is.
And as part of the budget process, I mean, that's going to help everybody a lot just to kind of understand this flow. I think every year, there's more and more information that's understood and presented. And I appreciate you, you know, putting these things together. It's, they're a little different format sometimes than what we put out, but it makes me feel good because it confirms in general, you know, the way the system works.
And one note I did want to get into is the cash balances are better May 17 versus May 18. May 16. But June's, June's a little better time to identify.
Right. June and December, that really tells you how you're doing. There's always variables.
But we are better by several million dollars.
And go back to 15 or 14, so it's been progressively better the last three years, actually.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Oler.
I'm going to switch, well, along the lines of Earl's report of showing how we got more of a tax dispersment there in, what was it, June, I believe. I know, I think it was last year, with Todd, with the council, president, and then with you, it'd been brought up that there's some community leaders that are getting together and working on, looking at our tax assessments here in town to see what the tax assessments are doing. Because these numbers, that's where it starts, is at the bottom. We don't know what our tax assessments are doing, then we're not generating any new revenue. I know that there was supposed to be representation. Do either one of you know if anybody from the council is being represented with these community leaders or how we can get in contact to get some kind of reports of, of their findings? I know I was asked at one point and then I had no contact, so.
I was asked at the beginning of the year if I wanted to be on that, and I felt that it was beneficial to have Councilman Nation on there to be a continuous presence. So I'll let him explain where we stand on that now. Councilman Nation.
And I have been a continuous presence on it. The, the thing that's happened is the, the group's called Terre Haute Competes. It's the group that Paul Thrift and others conveyed. The mayor's worked closely with this group, too. He and I are on the steering committee, and then there are a bunch of smaller committees that broke out. And Amy, I, I did give them your name to try to get you involved, especially because of your previous job with helping with assessments. But it sounds like they didn't get you involved. I'm sorry about that. There has been a preliminary draft.
Report for that report. Are there, do I have to touch a button or something to make it go?
There has been a preliminary draft report that I saw like a month ago, but I don't think that they are ready to go public with any of it yet. There, there are like six work groups, and I think they're trying to get all six of them done. And a couple of them aren't finished yet. But that work is done, and it's a compelling report. It was a big fat thing, you know, 20-something pages, which I, I don't know if I, if I actually have a copy of it that I can share it with you. So that's, that's, I'm sure that eventually we will see a public rollout of the work of not just that committee, but of the other committees, too. And I, I think that, you know, it'll probably confirm a lot of what you think, which is that we need to do better with assessing property inside the city, especially new stuff. It seems to be a big challenge. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, just briefly, and I appreciate Todd being a part of this, and he's been an active participant with the meetings, more so than some of the other participants. So I appreciate you being there the majority of the time. There were five committees formed, and four of them actually have some good data. One of them still work to be done, or they don't have a report yet. And I think we're getting very close. I know Martha, you sat on one, and Earl, you sat on one. Those people were selected by others besides me, so, you know, it has nothing to do with any of that. I'm a participant, just like you guys are. And there's some value that's going to come out of this. Some of it will, it'll validate things we're doing, and other things will point out that we need to fix some things in our community. The assessed value piece is just very frustrating because it's, it's just wrong. And we've talked about it before, it is what it is, we got to fix it. And so I'm hopeful that this, when this report comes out, it will generate some public interest, media interest, and we can get, get some stuff fixed. It probably means several million dollars a year to us as a city of Terre Haute in revenue that's sitting on the table out there that ought to be collected. And they would be paying that in any other city in Indiana or the Midwest if they had those businesses. It's primarily commercial, it's not residential. And we need to be fixed, it needs to be market-driven. So I appreciate you bringing that topic up, but I'm feeling good that we're, we're looking at it. There's a community effort to address it in some way.
Yeah, because I agree. A lot of it is commercial, but there are some residential. Because I know when the last assessment papers come out, it drew a lot of red flags with me. When I'm looking at assessments that were the same as they were previous, dollar to dollar, same exact amount. There should be a new land order, these values should be changed, and so somebody's dropping the ball somewhere. And that totally affects here.
Right. We are definitely affected.
And I know that there was an article in the paper about it and, and some raised concern. So I guess I was just asking, you know, where are we at with this? And, and to me, that's where we need to be pushing. Because if you're not pushing to get the assessments correct, we're never going to have the correct tax dollars to have the correct money coming into our general fund and all of our other funds. So I guess that's where I'm at.
Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, the, the timeline I'm hearing is August release of this.
I haven't heard any update, but that was the last update. Yep.
Okay. Well, it's, it's not here.
And one other little comment, Mr. President. When you're on your, the tax numbers that we were looking at, that you've put in your report that you were talking about, that are increased, we received, it's about 57%. Normally, we collect about 52% of our property tax dollars in June each year. That's what we've done for the last three years, been 52-48. This time it was 57%. So I guess 5% of our population paid both of their payments, which that means our payment that comes in December is going to be smaller than what we anticipated because this payment was bigger than what we had budgeted for. It'll balance out, but it, it came out to 57% of our property tax dollars were collected in June versus normally 52%.
Okay. I, I used the number, I think I used 53.
It might have been 52-something.
When I divide the June payment by 53%, I get a total that's within $100,000 of what Umba provided last fall. So I'm hopeful that.
We'll see.
Yeah. I know we won't know until the check comes.
Until the check comes, because it's never, it's never what we really think it's going to be. So I just wanted to make, throw that out there.
I'd rather start out with a higher number.
I would, too. I would, too.
Mayor, with regard to the long-term control plan, where are we at on the financing on that?
We are working with Umba. We just, I, Chuck. I'll let Chuck address that. I was in the meeting. Umba has done that analysis, and we're starting the process. Chuck can tell you, the more of the staffs he's on top of it.
All right. We're looking at kind of a two-phased approach for the bond, kind of an intermediate, or beginning phase where we can get the engineers paid for the design work that needs to be done upfront. This fall, we've got some preliminary numbers from Umba. I'm going to be meeting with them again next week to try to sharpen those, sharpen those numbers down a bit. We've got our, excuse me, preliminary engineering reports being modified. That's, that needs to be presented to the SRF. Our application is in for the SRF. We've kind of got a spot held right now for, for bond money, but the bond documents are not finished yet. So we're moving on ahead.
Okay. So, because it makes me look at the $6 million, are we going to pay that back before the end of the five-year term with the county, or are we going to?
Yeah, the, the schedule that Umba's put together, it looks like it'll be paid back a little bit before that, but it'll definitely be paid back by that. We'll see what the new, I need to see the new numbers. The original plan, I thought it looked like it was going to take three years, which would be one year short, you know, of the, of the five years that we owe it to.
Okay. And then is that, are we going, I know you talked about Umba being here next month, will they discuss that as well?
That'll probably be a separate meeting. They may touch on that, but this is the group that helped us for the budgeting process. But we'll have Dean come in at some point when that's ready to present that separate thing.
Okay.
It's good, though. I can tell you, I'm very happy with the report, and you'll all be happy with also.
Looks like, looks like we passed that sewer rate increase where we really needed to. Because this second bond issue is not, is a lot later than what, what we provided you last, last, last fall.
But we're still on schedule with the, with.
The schedule I got here, Mayor, said we'd close in April of 17 on the new bond issue.
That, that was what we said, that that, we're still on the overall schedule with Feds, we're still in compliance.
We passed the rate increase after listening to people saying, we got to pass it, we got to pass it, or they're going to take us over, or they're going to take us over.
Well, it'll be soon, so it'll be a few months behind.
We got our job done, plenty ahead of us.
Yep. It's good, though.
Thank you. First order of business, myself, please.
Appropriation three, 2017, $1,283,513 and 0.02 from Lillet Special Fund number 0257, Service District, number 432010. This was previously tabled.
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney. As I discussed with you all last week, this, this was tabled due to some confusion that we had in June at the regular meeting at that time. I've reviewed the state board of accounts memorandums on this special 257 fund, and I believe that the way it's presented is the way that it should be appropriated. Once that's done, then we can reclassify the expenditure in that account to make sure our books are, are showing properly for the expenditure here. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on appropriation three, 2017? Council? Councilwoman Oler.
I move that we approve appropriation three, 2017, as presented.
It's been moved that we approve appropriation three, 2017 by Councilwoman Oler, second by Councilwoman DeBong. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
General Order six, 2017, meaning city code, chapter eight, Article one, section eight dash thirty-four, specific maximum speeds. Church Drive, Ferndale Drive, Lakeview Drive, Mayflower, Mayflower Court, Mayflower Drive, and Terravista Drive.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Council Eddie Felling, City Attorney. Again, this has to do with the Terravista neighborhood. There are several streets there will be reducing the speed from 30 to 25 miles an hour. Again, I discussed with the engineering department when this was first brought to my attention. We believe that based upon previous studies done in the neighborhood, the terrain there, that this would be justified.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Order six, 2017? Council? Councilwoman Crossen?
I know this neighborhood well, and I have no problem with doing it here, but I've already started getting calls from people in other neighborhoods about the speed limit in their neighborhoods. And so I wondered if either you, or I don't know whether it would be Chuck, or someone could speak to what kinds of considerations we look at to set those speed limits. I think that might be useful for people, people in the public to know.
While we wait on this, I know the biggest things we always try and do is some sort of a traffic study, depending upon the flow, number of vehicles, what type of area it is, whether it be residential neighborhood. Chuck?
Really, the minimum speed is 30 miles an hour. It's recommended by transportation engineer. 25 miles an hour or less. You see that only in schools, children are bred. We didn't really invent this. We don't think it's going to make that much difference in neighborhood speed, did they, you know, speed or speed. I mean, the speed limit, I don't think it's going to have an effect. Yeah, we, we also predicted that we're going to get a call from all the other neighborhoods. We tell people that that person's speed by your house is neighbor, because most of these subdivisions don't have any cross streets in them. So, you know, it becomes a neighborhood issue and a livability issue. But as far as the traffic impacts and that sort of thing, it's going to have a minimal impact.
Thank you, Aye.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation.
Chuck, one more question. Do you have an estimate on what this is going to cost? No, very much signs.
I think the street department said about 75 bucks a sign. So we'll post the speed limits, signs, removing the old ones, putting the new ones back in. About 75 bucks a pop, so, yeah. It's, it's not exorbitant. I mean, that's just a, you know, minor cost.
Thanks, Aye.
Chuck, I know that there's going to be some more development in that subdivision with 45 new blocks. Are we going to have the same 25 mile an hour speed limit when?
Well, they would have to come back to the council and change the code for the new, for the streets that are not listed in this, in this ordinance. But, yeah, we could do that.
Mr. President, I move that we approve General Order six, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved that we approve General Order six, 2017, by Councilman Elliott, second by Councilwoman Oler. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. It's one, though. I, I voted no on it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
General Order seven, 2017, meaning city code, chapter two, Article nine, section two dash one seventeen, Police Pension Fund.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Council, thank you. Eddie Felling, City Attorney. To provide you with a little bit of an update of what's gone on over the past week and I guess months now at this juncture, I had a very positive meeting with Mr. Damboll, who's representing a few of the pensioners of the 25 fund. Earlier this week, we've started some initial discussions, and I know there were some questions from the council with regard to this specific ordinance last week with some possible proposed changes or additional language that would go along with that. What I'm going to be requesting here this evening is that the ordinance be tabled. Again, the only provision, or change, reason for the change to begin with was to make sure that in the future, we would have no issues with the use out of that fund going forward. Because of this other issue that's going on with regard to total amounts out of the account, things of that nature, I'm, again, I'm asking for another 30 days or until at least our next regular meeting so that we can hopefully come to some closure with regard to the legal discussion that Mr. Damboll and I would be having. So with that being said, I'll answer any questions, but I would request that this be tabled.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on General Order seven, 2017? Council?
Mr. President?
Councilman Oler, Councilman Nation.
I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, so I missed the discussion, but it looks like all we're doing is adding one sentence that says the use of the police pension fund shall be governed by, and it cites the Indiana Code. Don't we already follow Indiana Code?
That's correct. I mean, Indiana Code's always, if, if there would be something in our local code that is conflicting with Indiana State Code, always the State Code's going to trump what's in our city code. As I explained last week, we always use the city code, especially with the creation of funds, as an outline. That's the first thing I'll go to look at, or the controller's office will, with regard to what permitted uses are for, for a particular fund. The, the interesting thing in this situation is that most funds aren't governed by state law. So there's not, if, you're not automatically going to go look at the Indiana Code to see if there's something that's not in concert law in those lines. Unfortunately, in this case, what's in our code is incorrect as far as the permitted uses. So what my attempt was here was just to correct that simply by referring anyone else that would be looking into the code to the proper state code section, and then you would know exactly what you can and cannot do with that, that fund.
Thank you for that explanation.
Councilman Oler.
I move to table General Order seven, 2017. Till next month, our sunshine, sunshine.
Second. It's been moved that we table General Order seven, 2017, to our sunshine meeting in August by Councilwoman Oler, second by Councilwoman Garrison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled. Next order of business, please.
Special Order twenty-seven, 2017, rezoning of property located at 1225 North Eighth Street, favorable recommendation with conditions.
All those, there are petitioners, speak on this, please.
Hi, my name's Brad Bull. I'm the owner of Blackburn Collision at 1245 North Eighth Street. Last year, I purchased the property that was sitting beside us to the south, which was a falling down, fallen apart house. We tore it down, and we have been very blessed by the community and have grown substantially in the last six to seven years, and we're wanting to expand and build an addition onto our building to potentially then, when it's to capacity employ, three more employees, which would bring our total to 14. would bring our total to fourteen employees.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen? Counsel?
Twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. Anybody like to speak on this? Counsel?
President Nasser.
Counselman Garrison.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is in my district, and I had a chance to go out to visit Blackburn Collision, and talk to Brad, and take a tour, and pretty impressive operation. You know, he's got some of the latest paint booths, and EPA standards, as I understand it, that are required. He's doing a tighter job, a better job than what is required. And it's interesting, some of the conversations that come out, and how many steps there are for businesses to continue to work in the city, and I just hope that we'll be favorable. And this is a slight expansion, I think, I've been able to, and this isn't gonna add to any additional painting or anything, this is gonna be prep work and auto body work. So, with all of that, I move to approve Special Ordinance twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, as presented.
Second. It's been moved that we approve Special Ordinance twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, by Counselman Garrison, second by Counselman Nation. Allers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen, vacating a portion of north-south public alley located between six-twenty-two through six-fifty Lafayette Avenue, and nine-twenty-one through ten thousand seventeen North Sixth Street. Problems were noted, and you may have a proposed amendment before you.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Duellen, appearing on behalf of the petitioner Vermillion Development, together with Indiana State University and H&amp;H Realty. And we are seeking to vacate the north-south alleyway that lies, and I'll clarify, strictly on the property that is being purchased and proposed for development by Vermillion Development. This is the property that we rezoned, I believe, two months ago, to allow for a senior assisted living facility. And as I explained, when we met last week, we do not own the north end of the block, nor do we own the south end of the block, so we're simply vacating that portion that lies within the proposed development site. The amendment that Michelle had referred to is the fact that the ordinance as prepared and presented to you, and in the petition, referenced the fact that the alley runs south all the way to the north boundary line of Locust Street. And the alley, in fact, does run that way, but we're not seeking to vacate that at this point. And we've amended the ordinance so that it clarifies, it is just the legal description of the properties within the proposed site, within the ordinance, and that legal description matches the common street address of the properties as were published. And that amendment has been presented to Michelle. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselman Nation.
Jeff, it's hard for me to sort through this. The legal description, I'm sure, is correct, but it's also just words, and I work better on this kind of thing with pictures. The picture that I have is from you, and it's in, I guess, the ordinance that we're amending. So, can you describe what part of this north-south alley is not being vacated?
Sure. I will refer to the larger blow up that I brought of the site plan for you, and this is the same site plan that we looked at when we were looking at rezoning the property. And so, we have Locust Street on the south that I was referring to, up here, Second Avenue, you'll see. Our property line on the north runs across this way, so northern portion of the block and the alley is not being vacated. There's also, as you may be familiar with the site, an alley that turns to the east and runs along, actually, our north property line, and services a home and a garage that is along Second Avenue. So, we're not disturbing the north-south alley, and we're not disturbing the east-west alley that services the north end of this block. On the south end, we're stopping down, again, at our property line, and leaving the south portion, and by my calculation, or by the surveyor, I guess it's approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-six feet, that would be left on the south end for the alley to reach Locust Avenue. We're not vacating that portion. So, it's simply in the middle on the site property to allow for the structure as proposed.
So, at the south, excuse me, at the south end, you're creating a dead-end alley that goes a hundred and ninety feet north of Locust?
Approximately, yes. That's accurate, I'll say partially, in that, as it exists, and as the alley is paved, yes, there's a dead-end alley. There actually is a dedicated east-west alley through that southern portion, from the north-south alley heading west over to North Sixth Street. There's a, there is one home that sits south of our property line, and it's actually in one parcel south of our property line. The home sits along North Sixth Street.
I see it on the map here, yeah.
Okay. There's a dedicated alleyway that runs just on the south side of that home, actually, east-west. It's not paved, it's not used, but if you look on the map, you'll see it's there, and it's dedicated. So, if we wanted to open that up so that there's not a dead-end alley, that actually could happen, if you chose to do that.
And then at the north side, your drawing shows the north-south alley, and it shows the east-west alley continuing over, and then you're saying that that east-west alley continues to the east and then turns north and goes up?
No, it doesn't. Actually, and what's shown, the alley itself is actually not shown on this map, the east-west alley is not shown, because it actually sits to the north of our property line. What's shown on the site plan is a proposed fire lane that we were building along the north side of our building, that gives fire protection access to the backside of the property, and that was discussed with the chief as well. But the east-west alley runs on the north side of our property line. It currently is paved, it exists, and it does dead-end short of Lafayette Avenue. And as I say, it really services a garage on that block.
Okay. But, and it doesn't turn north, then?
It doesn't.
It comes over as far as the garage and then stops.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. The only part that would turn north is the driveway that services the garage.
Thank you, Jeff. Aye.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Aller.
In all these parcels that are listed, they're all the ones, they're already Vermillion Development owns, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Aye.
Counselman Garrison.
If there are no further discussion, I move to approve Special Ordinance thirty, amend Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Garrison, second by Counselman DeBong, that we amend Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen, as presented. Allers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment carries.
President Nasser.
Counselman Garrison.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Garrison, second by Counselman DeBong, that we approve Special Ordinance thirty, two thousand seventeen, as amended. Allers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Special Ordinance thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located between four-thirty-one North Fourteenth Street and four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street. No problems were noted.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm attorney with Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner Catholic, uh, excuse me, Royal Catholic Archdiocese of Indianapolis Properties Incorporated. They own the property, but it's being used by Catholic charities here in Terre Haute. This is, as stated, a, an alley that they're wishing to vacate, that is actually a dead-end alley, so this isn't going to adversely affect any of the neighbors. I have spoken to the neighbor to the south of the property that we're rezoning tonight. He, as I mentioned last week, had some initial concerns, thinking we're gonna open up the alley. I had the opportunity to speak with him today about not only the vacay in the alley, but also the rezoning. He has, as well as the variance that we filed, that'll be heard next month, and he has no issues with this, with this vacation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance thirty-one, two thousand seventeen? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Aller.
I move that we approve Special Ordinance thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved that we approve Special Ordinance thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, by Counselwoman Aller, second by Counselwoman Crossen. Allers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Thank you.
Special Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand seventeen, rezoning of property located at four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street, and a portion of vacated alley west of four-thirty North Fourteenth and a half Street. Favorable with conditions.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm the attorney here in Terre Haute, Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. I'm here representing petitioner Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Indianapolis Properties Incorporated. This, they own the property to the north of this, this is going to be used for Catholic Charities Food Bank, which, as you know, serves seven counties, serves a current of two-point-five million meals each year, to approximately thirty-two thousand people. This, and this is in their current location, this is a much larger location, which will help them continue their mission and continue to serve more people in our area. This currently is owned R-three, and the rest of the property is M-two. They're trying to make this uniform, rezone this as well as the alley, so it's all M-two. Their intentions with this property is to fence it, pave it, and allow their employees to park, which I believe is what, how this was used in the past. As stated, this was asked favorably by the Area Plan Commission. There were a few conditions, and one was, there's a question of a setback due to the fact that it's M-two. That has been filed as a variance. As previously stated, I spoke to the owner who is affected by this. He has, he had some questions. After discussing with him, he has no objection to the variance, and I believe that'll go through next month. And tonight, I'm asking you to approve the rezoning of this property from R-two to M-two. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on Special Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand seventeen? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselman Nation.
Richard, can you talk a little bit about what went into the determination that this needs to be zoned industrial for a parking lot?
Well, the thought was, there's two ways to go. You could've done an R-two planned development for the parking lot, and as you all know, planned developments, a lot of times, for that reason, so if it's not used later on, go back to residential. You know, with this particular petitioner, this use, this isn't a, maybe this'll work, maybe we'll be here a year from now, this entity will be here for a very long time. It was, so as a result, the idea was, let's do it, make it all uniform, make it all the same, and plan for the long run here. This, if things go as, let me back up. You know, hopefully, I guess, the hunger issue will be resolved, and we won't need Catholic charities and the food bank. But there's a reason, unfortunately, that they need more space, because there's more of a need, and this is satisfying that request. So, realistically, this is gonna be an organization that's gonna be here for a long time, so the thought is, let's make it uniform, let's make it all M-two.
Thanks for that explanation.
I hope they answered a question I might've.
Yeah, generally speaking, I think that it's a better approach to go with planned developments, mostly because if and when Catholic charities is finished with this property, then that becomes a piece of property that's marketable as industrial. I am embarrassed to say that I haven't looked at the zoning map to see if this would be the only industrially-zoned piece of property in that area, or if it's adjacent to other industrially-zoned parcels. Do you happen to know that?
It's in the staff report. I don't, I never received a copy of the staff report, but the Area Plan Commission has the, it's mainly R-three, except for a long, because that was obviously railroad, because it's on a trail. So, most of it is M-two, and especially all the part that is owned by the Archdiocese. But I can't, I apologize, I can't tell you everything all around it.
Yeah, and if I really had strenuous objections to this, I would have done more research on it. I don't mean to be making it sound like I'm not gonna vote for it, I just wanted to express the sentiment that, generally speaking, I, this kind of situation, to me, makes more sense to do as a planned development, mostly because of future uses and property transfers that, you know, do happen in the future. So, I stopped.
And I think if I was here tonight with a startup company who has an idea, the R-two planned development would be the way to go, and they thought that if it doesn't work out, it stays residential, but I think we can all agree that Catholic charities and the Archdiocese does not go anywhere. And if they do, we've got a bigger problem in our community.
Mr. President.
Counselwoman Crossen.
I move adoption of Special Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand seventeen. Second.
It's been moved by Counselwoman Crossen, second by Counselwoman Aller, that we approve Special Ordinance thirty-two, two thousand seventeen. Allers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Resolution eleven, two thousand seventeen, authorizing the extension of a temporary revolving loan from redevelopment.
Petitioners, speak on this, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Luke Bennett. As you know, this is, as we talked about last week, this is just the extension of the existing loan with the redevelopment commission to the city. And I was asked last week, and then again this week by another council member, for some follow-up information regarding why we thought the projections were off a little bit. So, I did as much research as I could on my own since last week and then this week, because obviously with Leslie being gone, it's a little bit more difficult for me to get all the information that I need, but I looked at the big things, the big changes, and what was different. So, I guess I would share with you that what easily stuck out for me, I just wanted to share a couple of things with you. This goes back to our cash, or our tax distribution that we just recently received in June. We got about one-point-three million dollars more than what I had anticipated us taking in, and when we, back in January and February, when these cash projections were put together, we didn't anticipate that. So, there's a one-point, a plus one-point-three million dollars of additional revenue that we had not planned, and it was in the cash balances. And then the other thing that's kind of different is, and really looking at some seasonal kind of things, but I did note Edit and CCD, and CCI is kind of small, but Parks and Recreation, Home and Lanes, Ray Park, just those alone, we have underspent the budget roughly two-point-one million dollars, a little bit more than that. I didn't include all the individual smaller funds. So, if you look at our underspend of kind of what we thought we might be doing, a lot of it is Edit, we've underspent about two million dollars of what we thought we would probably spend by July, and then we collected one-point-three million dollars, so it's very close to the three-point-two million dollars, Earl, that you came up with. I mean, I just, I'm in the ballpark, I didn't try to nail it down to the dollar, but that made me feel better that it came out that way, just by looking at those particular funds that had the biggest variances in them. So, that's generally what the difference was. I mean, I could do more analysis, but it would take me a lot longer than our accounting staff to do that. This is just my pulling data from information I already had, and those were pretty obvious things. So, I just wanted to share that with you to kind of answer both your question last week, Mr. President, and then Earl had sent me something about this also to respond to tonight. So, that's the difference. That's kind of why it is, and, you know, these things do change. I mean, I'm sure our projections for the rest of the year may vary from month to month. There may be some things that move to the next month, there could be revenues that don't come in until even after the first of the year, that we're projecting to get by the end of this year. And so, you know, those things just, there are variables that are out of our control when we look, you know, six months ahead, even, that sounds like a short period of time, but a lot of things can happen in six months. So, I would ask for your support tonight to extend- So I would ask for your support tonight to extend this loan on out to the end of the year. We will talk about this during the budgeting process about next year, and as we walk through this, we'll get a better feel for what twenty eighteen looks like, but I would just like to keep it as it is for now until December, when we get our taxes disbursed and we return those funds to redevelopment. So I'd ask for your support on that. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is everyone from the public that'd like to speak on resolution eleven two thousand seventeen? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
I continue to have a problem with the fact that this targets the downtown Tiff District. To my way of thinking, the downtown Tiff District money is being collected to do projects downtown. It's my understanding that by taking this action, we are not going to be able to spend it on projects downtown. We'll be able to spend it for day-to-day expenses until we get our next tax settlement. I would not be in support of this, and I won't be in support of it next year either. I think that as we craft the two thousand eighteen budget, it's important for us to wean ourselves away from borrowing against our redevelopment funds. I yield.
Mayor, go ahead.
Just one brief comment. I understand, Todd, the council decided what that split was gonna be, not me. So just, I mean, that wasn't my decision to use the majority of those funds from downtown. There's some forty-six dollars in there also. You know, the redevelopment commission, Steve Witt specifically, we went through, and we even bumped up the numbers for them to be able to spend money out of there, and they still have over a million dollars of extra money that's totally unencumbered for the rest of the year, and next year, it'll probably be even a bigger number. So they can react to things if they need to, and I support that. I want to do, there's some things I'd like to do downtown, too, so I hear you, and I want to get there also. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Crossen?
I am in agreement with the sentiment expressed by Councilman Nation, and I do understand that there's a list of things in various Tiff Districts that redevelopment has prioritized to get done, but I think this knowledge that it's likely that there's going to be money borrowed from their funds has a chilling effect on them actually pursuing things in the district that do need to be done. Many of us here are downtown weekly, if not every day. Iowa, you know, the people trip on the curbs that are uneven, trip on the sidewalks that are uneven, and that kind of thing goes on on a regular basis. Parking, there's no marked parking spaces. It's, those things are problems, and I just think that it has a chilling effect on the use of those funds and the creativity with which redevelopment can go about using, planning to use those funds, when it is likely that this body, that mayor's gonna request, and this body's gonna approve the use of those funds for other purposes. So I yield.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah. The, one of the other issues we talked about a lot last winter is transparency related to the amounts of money in the redevelopment accounts. That was one of the reasons why I wanted us to take a look here at mid-year rather than running to the end of the year with that. Everything I see and hear in response to questions I've asked is that issue has been resolved. I also believe the amount of redevelopment funds that used to be in the pooled cash account were probably somewhere close to seven million dollars or so. We now have this state law that formulates the borrowing arrangement and requires that. We've gone to five next year. I hope to go to less, but you just can't replace, you know, seven million dollars of cash overnight without figuring out where that's gonna come from, either in new revenues, sale of assets, or reduction in expenses. So to me, there has to be a little bit of a weaning process here. Their schedule indicates a two million dollar shortfall at the end of November if this is not, not approved. I, I think there are significant consequences to that if this is, if this is not approved. In principle, yeah, maybe we don't like it, we don't want to do it, but for a lot of practical reasons, you know, we need to continue to live with it and work out of this over as quick a period of time as we can, which is, which is a lot quicker than right now. I yield.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor, just to go along with what Councilman Elliott said. On this cash flow, you're saying that we'll have a negative two million balance with the loan?
Pull out that document, the one you gave last week. What I gave you last week.
Page B.
Hang on. Well, what will happen is, we will get, as you remember, I based this on a hundred percent spend, so we, right now, we're running three percent under. It was on the general fund, just one fund, which is our biggest one in this pool. And the second thing is that we will get a cash early disbursement from the county in November, but I don't know what the amount is yet. So two million dollars is, we should be fine.
Okay.
We should be fine between the two. I mean, we, it'll be positive, I just don't know it to what level, but right now, I show this because that's kind of what we're up against. If for some reason we don't get an early distribution.
And could you explain how that early disbursement works with the county? They don't have to do that, do they?
Yes, by statute. Yes, they have.
And what's, what's the timeline that they do?
They have to do it within thirty days, yeah, is it, is it thirty days of the request? And so we typically give the request to them around the day of collection.
Okay.
So thirty days from November tenth or whatever.
Okay.
And you usually give it to us in about two or three weeks, so I would expect us to receive it at the end of November.
Right, and one of the things that you had mentioned when you were discussing why the projections were different than what we received in February is that you said that Edit money wasn't being spent fully. So what concerns me is that we're not using Edit money for economic development, and that we're not using redevelopment money for redevelopment purposes.
No, that's untrue. I mean, we're using all redevelopment money for redevelopment purposes based on their plan, and there's an excess even beyond what we're borrowing. On the Edit side, we're just now in the Edit season, so we will spend quite a bit of Edit money between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
That's when our bills come due for Edit, is typically in that beginning of June and going through probably November. So it'll shift, and so, you know, if you want to look at this later, you'll find out it'll, it may shift by a month, but the end result will be about the same, what we project.
Councilman Azar?
Mayor, are there any projects on the books at this point in time with redevelopment that cannot be completed because of this loan?
Absolutely not. And it's, you know, it's unfortunate, I've had some other people approach me saying that, if they put it in the plan, we won't borrow the money. I mean, we can't. They, it's their funds. And so we'll see what their eighteen plan looks like, and we're working together with Steve and the team to make sure that we're covering all the bases. We, and so it's covered. With an excess.
Okay, and I was gonna say, you said there's what, about a million dollar excess?
At least a million. I think it'll be more than that, but at least a million.
Technically would not affect any projects that are happening or possible projects up to almost a million dollars?
If their commission decided to spend a million dollars in October, it's sitting in their bank account. They can go spend it.
Okay.
And if for some reason it was bigger than that, then we'd work with them to pay some of this back, or we would do something to not stop them from doing a project. I won't let that happen.
Follow up on that, Mayor. What if hypothetically, a corporation or business decided to come downtown and redevelopment needed to have some incentives in place to pursue that, and they needed three million dollars from that? So would we be in the choice of having to decide whether that business come in here or making payroll?
Well, there's nothing on the table like that, and there's no way that would happen by the end of the year with that kind of a commitment would have to be delivered. Those projects usually take about two years, and we've never funded anything like that in the downtown, at my knowledge of the history, for a project. And most of the time, like I said, the Denning Hotel is an example, we helped out. That was about a two-year process before any cash was ever, so it would be the same thing. It's unlikely that could even happen in eighteen at this point, probably nineteen.
And what we did for the Denning Hotel didn't really even involve writing a check. It was more...
Right, and at first, we thought it was going to, but then it switched, was even better for us, because we didn't have to write the check. So, but even so, it took two years to get to that point.
That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Councilman Garrison, ask the floor. Sorry.
I was gonna make a quick comment. I intend to approve this tonight, just basically because I'm not really seeing a lot of options for us, but I do believe that even though there aren't anything that's gonna be missed, I think just the fact that us in that account may reduce the chances that projects would continue or be to begin. So I, I hope that this council and mayor administration will really start working to wean ourselves away from this account. I yield with that.
Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, I, I continue to encourage redevelopment to get on the books, what they need to get on the books, and do what they need to do, and whatever falls out, falls out. It's important we improve our community for our citizens and for hopefully future, future growth. The other thing that point out, that, you know, that two million dollar minus number November thirty that the mayor's not too worried about, well, that would be seven million if the five million had to be repaid at the end of July, and not be available, because you notice that five million repayment there is in the decentral columns, would be minus seven million at the end of, end of November. He might be concerned about that.
I guess we wouldn't be able to deal with that.
So I yield. Councilman Demond?
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what Councilman Nation and Councilwoman Crossen said, but I think there were two words that Councilman Elliott spoke that really were spot on, significant consequences. If this does not pass, I imagine, Mayor, you would have to make some very difficult choices come in the very near future. I assume, correct me if you think I may be wrong, but I assume that would include a significant amount of layoffs and a decrease in city services. You know, at the beginning of this meeting, we were addressed by a few citizens who were concerned about the level of services provided by the city. I think by voting no on this, or if this did not pass, we would only see in the future a decrease in those services even further. I'm also fearful of potential layoffs, payroll not being made, but I will go back. In principle, I do not agree with borrowing from redevelopment. I don't like the idea. But sometimes, based upon the situation, I believe you have to do the right thing regardless of individual principle, and in my opinion, that is what I will be doing when I vote yes on this. Having said that, I yield.
Mr. President, I, I move we approve resolution eleven two thousand seventeen.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Elliott that we approve resolution eleven two thousand seventeen, second by Councilwoman Aller.
Roll call.
Roll call votes been called. Michelle, please.
Councilwoman Aller?
Yes.
Councilman Azar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crossen?
No.
Councilman DeBonne?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilman Garrison?
Yes.
Councilman Nation?
No.
Councilman Nassar?
No.
That is five yes, three no.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please.
DADC CF one form for resolution three two thousand eight. The, DADC had been granted an extension from the Harrison Township Assessor to file their paperwork late, which translated to the council receiving the CF one forms past the filing deadline. I believe these are all personal property for the most part. Let's see, resolution three two thousand eight is a personal property abatement, and they originally estimated that they would have a total of twelve hundred and forty-eight employees. They currently have nine hundred and nineteen. As a reminder, the meeting tonight will be a vote for in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If the council votes not in substantial compliance, then a hearing will be set.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
I note that their salaries are significant lower, significantly lower, too, which is to be expected since the, since they're down by about a quarter, when we look at the estimated employee numbers. For that reason, I move that we find them not in substantial compliance.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, second by Councilwoman Aller, that we find DADC, resolution three two thousand eight, in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order.
DADC resolution four two thousand eight, this is a corresponding real property abatement. They originally estimated twelve hundred and forty-eight employees at fifty-four million point seven. They have nine hundred and nineteen employees, currently thirty-nine point three million dollars salaries.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
For the same reasons, I moved that, since we're set in the hearing anyway, I moved that we find resolution four two thousand eight not in substantial compliance.
Second?
Comment? Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Elliott?
Yeah, I, I understand why you might want to feel that way, but there are issues within the market for their product that are beyond their control.
Yep.
And they've consolidated their operations, they've consolidated them here. And if Mr. Witt was here, he could speak to a lot more detail to that, but that's just, it's something what I happen to know is the challenge that, that they have. If they had their brothers, they'd probably have twenty-two hundred employees and two or three times the payroll they have, but from the time this has happened, there's significant change in market demand for their product.
I yield.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
I would just point out that all we're doing is setting a hearing. We're not taking it away from them. We're giving them an opportunity to come in and make their case again for how their industry has changed and why we should continue to give them these tax breaks. We've been through this before, and if nothing else, we can maybe impress upon the people who come to explain this to us that they need to direct their appeals for extensions to Michelle rather than to the county attorney's office. I yield.
Councilman Aller?
And I, I, you know, I see where you're coming from, Councilman Elliott and Councilman Nation, but I think, I know for the last couple of years I've been on the council, we're seeing some of these come through, the numbers just keep dropping and dropping, and some of these other companies, we've just called in to say, you know, to question and ask, and that's where I think I'm at, and I agree with Councilman Nation, that, you know, the last couple of years, we've not called them in because they've been, had extensions every year, too, on their forms. So that's where I stand. I yield.
Councilman DeBonne?
Yeah, Councilman Elliott, I, I tend to agree with you. I think you're probably right. I would like them to come and explain that, and we'll make sure that is the case. I see too often, and I'm guilty as well, I feel that we approve, we find a number of these in substantial compliance, that maybe we should move to a hearing. When we have a significant lower number of employees or salary, I think too oftentimes we do go ahead and pass the law without a hearing, and I think maybe it's time that does stop. But I do hear what you're saying, and I think you're probably right about that. I yield.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, second by Councilwoman Aller, that we find resolution four two thousand eight in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
DADC CF one form for resolution six two thousand seven. They stated that they would have twelve hundred and twenty-three They stated that they would have 1,223 employees at $53.2 million. They have 919, $39.3 million.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
For the same reasons that have been stated earlier, I move that we find Resolution Number 6, 2007 not in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, second by Councilman DeBon, that we find Resolution 6, 2007 in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
DADC Resolution 6, 2011. This is a personal property abatement. They originally estimated 1,312 employees at $60.8 million. They have 919 employees at $39.3 million.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I didn't realize I was stepping into this role when I started this.
Thank you very much.
Since, for reasons previously stated, I moved that Resolution Number 6, 2011 be found not in substantial compliance.
Second. And I would help you, but you know.
Yeah, yeah, except for...
I'm still more than quiet, Steve.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, second by Councilwoman Aller, that we find Resolution 6, 2011 in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
DADC CF1 Form for Resolution 7, 2009. This was a real property abatement. They originally estimated 1,248 employees at $54.7 million. They have 919 at $39.3 million.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
Ditto. To be more, to be more formal, I move that we find Resolution 8, 2009, no, 7, 2009, right? Not in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nation, second by Councilwoman Aller, that we find Resolution 7, 2009 in non-insubstantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three more.
Almost got him.
DADC Resolution 8, 2009. Personal property tax abatement, originally estimated 1,250 employees at $58.9 million. They have 919 employees at $39.3 million.
Mr. President.
Councilman DeBon.
I'm going to take the vote off of Councilman Nation here. I move that we find Resolution 8, 2009 not in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBon, second by Councilwoman Crossen, that we find Resolution 8, 2009 in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
DADC Resolution 12, 2010. It is a real property abatement. Originally estimated 1,258 employees at $59.1 million. They have 919 at $39.3 million.
Councilman DeBon.
Mr. President, for reasons mentioned previously, I move that we find Resolution 12, 2010 not in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBon, second by Councilwoman Crossen, that we find Resolution 12, 2010 in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, please.
Last one, Member 13, 2010. DADC. This is a personal property abatement, originally estimated 1,258 employees at $59.1 million. They have 919 at $39.3 million. And before you vote on this, remember you have to set the hearing after the last one. Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that we find Resolution 13, 2010 not in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBon, second by Councilwoman Crossen, that we find Resolution 13, 2010.
Discussion, back, discussion. I, I move that we...
After you vote.
After we vote, I apologize.
All right. It's been moved by Councilman DeBon, second by Councilwoman Crossen, that we find Resolution 13, 2010 in non-substantial compliance. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Aller.
We need to set hearing for 30 days. So if we do that as a special call before our sunshine meeting, are we within range?
Yes.
So what's that there?
I'm pulling the calendar.
Thank you.
That would be August 3rd.
So if we set it for 5:30, do you think that allows us enough time?
I hope so, yes.
Yeah. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Aller.
I move to set the hearing for our August sunshine meeting at 5:00.
For August 3rd.
August 3rd at 5:30. Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Aller, second by Councilwoman Crossen, that we set a special hearing for 5:30 on August 3rd, 2017, for compliance hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
One question. Is that the only hearing that we're holding, or are there others?
We have one left. We have one left.
Oh, sorry, missed it. Okay.
New business, Michelle.
General Order 8, 2017, Admitting City Code Chapter 9, Article 5, Section 9-112, Big Adjustment.
Finance.
Preparation 4, 2017, $85,851.53 from Ian Lasson, reporting number 0370 to Training Academy, number 0511.
Finance.
Preparation 5, 2017, $392,352.64 from Edit Number 0404 to Margaret Abner, Order Number 450521.
Finance.
Special Order 28, 2017, zoning a property located 1120 Beet Street.
Zoning.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to, that we adjourned by Councilman Azar, second by Councilwoman Aller. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Or adjourn.